February 17, 2015, Town of North Andover Planning Board Meeting. Okay, first up is 562 Boxford Street. Jean?
This is an A&R application for a lot line change. Brian Vaughn is here to represent the applicant. You should have seen in your package there was a variance granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Brian can speak to that and describe the notes here on this A&R plan are important.
Brian Vaughn for the applicant. We're just seeking endorsement for an approval not required plan. I think the most relevant issue on this plan, if you take a look at it, are the, in the notes where it says parcel A to be conveyed from Charlotte A-Hopping to the Gorton Family Trust and combined with other land of the Gorton Family Trust to form Lot 2, and parcel B to be conveyed from the Gorton Family Trust to Charlotte L-Hopping and combined with other land of Charlotte L-Hopping to form Lot 1. If you, if you look at the, kind of the top portion of the plan, which is really the relevant portion of the plan, the area identified as parcel A is going to be conveyed from one lot owner to the other. The area identified as parcel B is going to be conveyed from one lot owner to another. This lot is a really oddly shaped triangular lot, as you can see, that is currently an undersized lot. It was conforming at the time when it was originally developed. The zoning subsequently changed. So, we went to the zoning board and obtained a variance just to make sure that in providing for this lot line adjustment, because we would be creating a new lot, we wanted to make sure that we retained the grandfathering for the new lot that was being created. That's why we were before the zoning board. They already approved that. So, it actually is becoming a more conforming lot. The lot size of the remaining Lot 1 is actually going to be increased from what it currently is.
Now, the house is already existing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the only thing you're putting in the, changing the drive?
Right, so the drive will be relocated from the left side of parcel A over to Lot 1.
And there's no problem with sightlines on that drive?
No.
Changing the, except right now with the 50-foot-high snowbanks, probably.
Right, yeah, there's problems with sightlines everywhere in town right now.
Any other questions?
Where is the wetland, or where are the wetlands located?
If you look at parcel B, you can see the, kind of the hash line which creeps down a little bit into Lot 1.
Okay.
So, there is a, there's an existing wetland there, and the, the, it probably should be noted, I don't know if it was included in your package, but when we were before the zoning board, we, there was an issue which was identified by the Conservation Commission with respect to that wetland setback. We revised the plan. The plan that's before you has been subsequently reviewed by the Conservation Administrator, just to make sure that we had a sufficient buildable area for that house should it ever be demolished and reconstructed.
Now, how much land will actually be in Lot 2?
How much land will be in Lot 2? It's about 22 acres, more or less, and, you know, the Lot 2 is owned by the Gorton Family Trust, Joyce Bradshaw's a trustee. That lot is presently under agreement. That will be the subject of a future filing before this board.
For subdivision?
Correct.
How much of that Lot 2 would be wetlands and how much, any idea?
There's a substantial portion of it. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. But obviously, that'll have to all be addressed in the purchaser of the lots' subsequent filings.
Peter?
Yep.
Someone make a motion to direct the interim Town Planner to sign the A&R plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
171 Brentwood Circle, bond release.
171 Brentwood Circle had a pool, an in-ground pool and patio installed, I think approximately two years ago. The site is complete. Conservation has released their bond, and as-built has been turned in, and a certification letter has been received from the engineer stating it is in compliance with the original plan. So, they have requested their bond release.
Does anybody have any questions on that one?
I move we release, we release the bond for 171 Brentwood Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 88 Johnson Street, bond release.
88 Johnson Street, the applicant was going to try to make it tonight, but he could not, and they had had a form A done several years ago. They constructed a house on one of the lots. What was missing from the file was a covenant that was required. I think I copied everybody on the covenant. He has since submitted that, and the file also did not have the recorded decision, but he did go to the registry. He obtained the recorded decision. It had been recorded. Certificate of occupancy was issued several years ago. They've been living in the house, so I recommend the release of the bond. That's the covenant.
Any questions?
So moved.
Okay, motions, release the bond? Make a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is 351 Willow Street on? I think they were postponed.
They are on, John, but John Simons is expected shortly, and so he would be the fourth member of the board, so we're going to wait, we'll give him another 15 minutes or so, if you don't mind.
Okay, and we need John for 1046 Crew 2.
So, 1046 Grape Pond Road. I have actually left a definitive subdivision extension request. So, the applicant is continuing to work on the resolution to the drainage issue. That being said, they've also submitted, last meeting we talked about, a proposal to redirect some drainage, both, actually leave some directed to the wetland and redirect some others to the back of the lot. They've submitted their watershed special permit application. It actually was noticed today in the paper, so it is on track to be heard on March 3rd. However, the applicant would like to request a waiver of that watershed contingent upon, all the material has already been sent to Lisa Eggleston. She will review the project, and understanding that upon her review, if you deem to waive the watershed, we can still condition the definitive subdivision with any recommendations that Lisa has. So, does John would like to speak to the request?
I was going to wait till later on in the discussion, but we're almost there anyway, so. We had filed, as Jean had indicated, we filed in the alternative either request for watershed special permit, or in the alternative, a request for a waiver from that requirement, specifically because we just didn't want to waste any further time, or time is short and the spring is coming up pretty quickly. And, and this is really a form over substance issue, and the, the main reason for the request for the watershed special permit was specifically because of the drainage that's being, the drainage lines that are being redirected and modified, and stormwater being corrected based on discussions that I believe Phil Christiansen had with the board last, at the last meeting. And so, that, the work within, with respect to the stormwater lines is what's triggering the watershed protection district special permit, and we could just as easily condition the definitive approval with respect to watershed, with respect to stormwater issues as we could with the watershed protection district special permit. I'm just trying to cut down on the paperwork, but under the watershed protection district provisions states that when any construction proposed on an existing structure within the watershed district will not expand the existing footprint of a structure and will not disturb the existing topography, and is a proposal on town, so the planning board may determine without public hearing that submission of a watershed protection district special permit is not required. And so, so basically, we're simply installing these stormwater lines, and, and in terms of any protections that may be recommended by the town's peer review engineer, we'd be more than happy to include them as part of the definitive subdivision decision that would be discussed at the next hearing. And so, this evening, we're simply requesting a waiver from the watershed special permit requirements, and rather than going through the full hearing process for a second item and drafting a second decision, we could condition the definitive approval just as easily. We can-
Why not hold this decision until we approve or disapprove the combined?
Well, that's an option, too. I mean, we're happy to do that as well. We could either have two separate hearings and then decide that you only need one, or actually, you only need to issue one decision, in which case, we could withdraw the watershed special permit application and take care of it that way. It really doesn't, I'm just trying to simplify things, and I have no problem with just deferring or continuing that discussion as part of the formal hearing for the watershed.
We should all be more up to speed on what's going to be happening. John is actually arriving now.
I think so. It was pretty, I think Phil might be able to speak on this. What was actually being done in that back area? Was a level spreader? Was that a structures? Do you want to speak a little bit on what's being done that might help make our decision on it?
Yes, Phil Christiansen, engineer for the applicant. At present, drainage from Grape Pond Road drains into 1046 Grape Pond Road property into a catch basin there, and then that discharges southerly towards property of Polino. And Polino objected to that drainage going in his direction, and we came up with a compromised solution for it. That drainage does eventually feed a wetland, so we couldn't eliminate it entirely. So, we spoke to Jack Sullivan, who's Polino's engineer, Jean Willis, and Bruce Thibodeau, and it was agreed that we could put a structure in to divide the flow, so the outlet from that new structure would be just a four-inch pipe going towards Polino's property. Any flows greater than capacity of the four-inch pipe would be directed to the rear of 1046, put through a level spreader, and then that would flow directly to the lake. So, that's a brief summary of what we're doing there.
I'll give you 30 seconds. They're requesting that Lisa review under the watershed, but combine it basically with the subdivision plan and not have a separate watershed, even though he did do all the filings, just in case we said no.
So, you did the filings?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's filed as a special permit. The request tonight is to allow a decision on the drainage to be made as part of the definitive subdivision plan and eliminate the special permit, just waive the special permit requirements.
Oh, okay. But you filed a special permit?
Well, we did file it just so we'd keep things moving.
It was noticed today, and everything's been submitted to Lisa for her review already.
But kind of to eliminate the extra order and the extra paperwork, we're saying, why don't we just waive that and include any decision?
I don't mind looking at it once and talking about it once, but I still don't understand why we can't file two separate decisions when we technically have to. I mean, we won't slow the thing down. We'll do them both at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason, John, when you were here, but the only reason we were looking to do that was just to reduce the paperwork. I mean, we'll, we'll condition the definitive with those conditions if there wasn't a special watershed special permit, but if you want to have two separate special permits, that's fine with us.
I just think you have to, I mean, for the record, and we won't, we won't slow you down at all. We'll review it once substantively and be done with it. And when, when is the watershed special permit? When were we planning on hearing it?
It'll be March 3rd.
March 3rd.
Well, then we'll file it, because you want to the end of, we'll just, we'll vote on both the same night.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, they'll just have identical, identical conditions, I guess, so, so again, there's just a-
I know it's a little bit of belt and suspenders, but I think it's a, yeah.
All right, fair enough.
So, with that, John, you have a request for extension of the subdivision again? So, right now, we're up 2:00 of February 28th.
So, yeah, okay, good. So, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the request for an extension for this subdivision, the 1046 Grape Pond Road, Rottica Estates subdivision until March 31st, and without any prejudice, of course?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension until March 31st for 1046 Grape Pond Road, without prejudice.
All in favor?
Aye. And so, we'll just withdraw our request for a waiver, and we'll just, thank you.
So, now we're going back to 351 Willow Street, with the rest of it started.
Yeah, my apologies for being late, the MBTA. I was a victim of the MBTA today, so. Think if you leave at 5:30, you would be able to make it in time, so. Okay, 351 Willow Street, I can try.
351 Willow Street. I have prepared a draft decision based on our conversation at the last meeting.
So, where do we stand? What questions or issues were open?
This is, review is complete. She's signed off on the project. Conservation has completed their review, although they did leave it open for one more clearing, planning hearing, just to make sure that you didn't have anything come up at this meeting, but they're prepared to close as well and issue their order of conditions at their next meeting.
And did we have any things we were waiting for, other than Lisa's review of the plans?
No, there was just two items that you asked to condition. One was the revisit the site. I put in for a year. John Moran is here. He's going to speak to, he would like to see that as a six-month review of occupancy versus available parking spaces on the lot, so to have an independent monitor to go out and look at the parking situation. And one other condition related to the parking area that is being expanded in the rear of the lot if there's any direct impact on 125 traffic. So, they both were included in the decision, and-
Good evening, for the record. My name is John Moran. I work for the Moran Cameron Group. We're here tonight representing Muffin Realty Trust. As Jean had stated, at the last hearing, the planning board is pretty much all set with the plans. Lisa's review was completed. We hadn't met with Conservation yet, so the planning board asked to keep it open just in case. We met with Conservation last week. Conservation's fine with everything. Conservation held the meeting open because their next meeting is next week. They're going to have the decision ready, and they're going to close an issue in the same night. So, closing last week wouldn't have gained us any ground, so ConCon wanted to just keep it open just in case something came up to tonight's meeting and we wouldn't have to reopen the hearing. But they're all set. As Jean had stated, they're going to close an issue next Wednesday. And there's two conditions that were put into the decision that the planning board had discussed last week, or at the last meeting. One with regards to revisiting the site to verify that the parking is still okay based on the parking variance or special permit that was requested. The other issue is to revisit the site to verify that there's no adverse impacts of that parking lot on Route 125. And the only request that I asked, it was put in there that we'd come back within approximately a year after the issuance of an occupancy permit. I had requested if we could modify that to six months. There was only one other minor change that we had on the finding of facts under Item 7. It had stated that distribution was now done by someone else off-site. It is done off-site, but it was actually still done by Baconjoy at their air facility. I spoke to Jean this morning about that, and she was just going to revise that.
Number 7, it's been updated in your copy here.
Yeah, so I believe that was changed. So, really, tonight, the only thing we were requesting is if it was possible to modify those two inspections, which were conditions 17 and 18, under prior to the release of security to approximately six months instead of approximately a year. And we feel that after six months, we should easily be able to evaluate if there is any impacts. Actually, our client, we're going to evaluate the impacts on 125 right after everything's pretty much built, before we even build the fence, and if our clients determine they don't want to deal with that issue, we're actually going to put the fence up right then. We already spoke to Conservation. Conservation's actually going to condition the order of conditions so that if we decide that we want to put that fence up, all we have to do is review the fence location with the administrator, and we won't have to go back to the commission. As you may recall, what we discussed is the fence has actually continued to about this point, and we talked about continuing the fence along and off the backside towards the Andover bypass. So, we're hoping that, you know, within six months, we should definitely know if the parking's sufficient and if we're having an issue with 125.
Okay, I mean, my preference would be to wait a year. If you choose to do something prior to a year, God bless you, that takes it off the table, but, you know, it gives us Four Seasons cycle, so we're not going to make it difficult for you. We're not going to call you in every quarter or anything, but, you know.
Okay.
So. Let's, let's see. We have to close the public hearing, right?
Yeah, that's true.
So, if somebody can make a motion to close the public hearing for the site, site plan review special permit for Baconjoy Muffin Realty Trust?
Move we close the site plan review special permit for 351 Willow Street South, Muffin Realty Trust.
Okay, motion made to close the public hearing. Somebody wanted to make a second?
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, let's dig in. You have in the very first paragraph, on the second page, at the top, you have two periods. You had to catch the important things here.
One question on addition 18. Showing proof that there's been no direct impact on 125. I didn't list what criteria they'd have to meet. I mean, other than there haven't been any accidents or complaints. I don't know if you have any thought on how you can condition that?
I mean, from my point of view, I think it's a little bit soft. It's kind of like, this is where you come in, you know, you may have to go out there sometime and poke around and-
125, yeah. 17's easier. You can show a study of occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, this is-
Should I have any complaint coming in, or we could try?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, to get any complaints, there's things that are readily noticeable. I think that's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for 351 Willow Street South.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
We didn't have very many. This is very good. This might have been the all-time low, so it's a good, a good thing I caught the period, because I would have felt that we weren't doing our job, so. A motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
So, we did all the ones that you talked about?
Yeah, we did all that.
Okay, what's up with that?
94 Flagship. To be honest, based on my recommendation, Steve Webster has come in to try to present, to present a site plan for 94 Flagship Drive, which, let me bring up the locus for you. Steve has had, I could attest, many conversations with Kurt Bellevance in the past and with Matthew Eggie on this site plan, and I came in very late in the game, so what I've asked Steve to do is come in, because there was, I think based on Matt Eggie's recommendation, the proposal is to add a loading dock to the front side of the building facing Flagship Drive and some sidewalk and a concrete pad. And in lieu of that, I guess based on discussions with Matt, he had recommended, since we're adding approximately 2,300 square feet of impervious surface, to kind of counter that in the rear of the lot and take up some of the pavement and make it, bring it back to pervious towards the rear. And Steve will go over this, but that's highlighted in green there. I will bring up the locus first. With that, he's now within buffer zones to a wetland, which would require some conversation with Conversation, with Conservation Commission, and I think, Steve, you've had some with Jennifer to date, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, let me just find this locus. Okay. So, for those of the not familiar, Flagship Drive is actually off of Willow Street, which you come in across from Mill Road off of 114. So, as you come in off of 114, you take an immediate left, and the yellow highlight there is where 94 Flagship is. And, so this is a better view of the site itself. Now, this property was recently purchased by the abutting owner, which is a metal finishing company, so this is their second location. They bought side to side, and I'll- They bought side to side. And I'll turn it over to Steve to show.
Can you make, give me a version of that that's a little smaller because I want to see what's around it.
Okay. Kind of comes up to a cul-de-sac here.
Part of the reason why I mentioned it, why I want to zone in on this is way, way, way back in time, even before I got on the planning board, when this commercial project was first being built, there were some issues with the houses on Marion Drive.
So, Marion Drive does directly a button in the back and you can see these metal parcels in the lower corner there, you see a house on the backside?
Yeah. I mean, it was one of the more messy issues of the relationship of commercial property and residential property than, you know, that I've seen since, since I've been involved in this. So, I, I look at that as a filter because we can't just say, even though it's de minimis, that necessarily it might not have an impact. So, that's...
And I apologize to Steve because I know, and I have email correspondence between Kurt and Matt, and Steve has been very much involved with the process getting to this point with those two. It is a button in the neighborhood. It used to be Kemblon, TruGreen, Kemblon. They actually, 95 permitted an additional 43 parking spaces when they were Kemblon. So, they have more than enough parking. However, the use now is going from that use to, Steve can describe the metal finishing use, and in addition to adding some impervious surface, there's different ventilation requirements and things like that. And what's being added is a loading dock for tractor trailer. So, Steve, take over.
My name is Steve Webster. I'm with...
Steve, just, you are transferring something down from New Hampshire.
There's a business that would be combining with the current operations to supplement that and moving down.
I have a lot of concerns about a metal plating operation being fairly close to residential areas and to, I think there's some wetlands around in there somewhere. And also, there was an episode with the plant up in New Hampshire.
Excuse me?
There was an episode with the plant up in New Hampshire, the office manager.
I'm not familiar with that.
Google it.
Okay. Go ahead. All right. My name is Steve Webster. I'm with Dutton and Garfield. We've been working on this project since they bought the building in late 2013. We had a meeting with Judith Timman at the time. And we needed a dock to access this building for this operation. In that discussion, actually, the owner brought it up that because of the sensitivity to the neighbors, that we put the dock on the opposite side of the building away from the neighbors. So, that's what's shown on this drawing. It's a 300 square foot bump out here. The plan shows a realigning of the driveway so we can bring the trucks in and back up behind the building, if you will, on the street side. As part of this transfer, we would be removing and paving here. And then, we would replace, the orange would be the, what we pave, and then the green areas is what we would transfer. One of the first things we did was have Mark West go out and flag this area because we had done work back there. I think it was 1995 to, on the last site improvements. So, Mark went out, Phil located the flags. We went back in. There was also a proposal to put a container, which we had located here. In Matt's review, he asked to move that outside the buffer. So, it's a fairly simple reconfiguration of the site to allow them for dock access, but on the opposite side of the building, of course, for the neighbors. In July, we met with Kurt, and he asked for all the backup information, which we gave him for all of the notices of decision, the certificates of compliance for the wetlands work and so forth. Given that, he indicated that he felt that he could handle this as a minor site plan review and review it internally. Subsequent to that, we went ahead and had Phil do the plan.
By the way, that might be his opinion, but he doesn't get to speak for the board, you know.
I've been informed of that. So, Kurt handed it off to Matt. We worked with Matt on, you know, revising this plan. He was satisfied with it. As we put our plans together to move to, applied to the building department, I went down to the fire department, met with the code enforcement, Fred McCarthy down there, and he signed off on it. He didn't have a problem with it. He wanted an engineered plan for the internal operations of the building, which we have engineer in place for that. We had a small glitch, which we discovered inside here, which was a, in the history of it, they had a backup dock on this end. And at the time, they had a catch basin there. While, while we were doing our planning, we found a manhole cover in that corner, opened it up and found that the drainage ran under the building and then back out again. So, we called Phil back in, and he shot the grates to that and modified the plan so that we could redo the drainage to have it packed properly and not go underneath the building. So, that's the gist of the, of the movement around the structure. The question came up during our discussions as far as the replacement area. We figured we'd take pavement away from this end, which would complement that area. So, I've had a conversation with conservation, and she thought I should submit for determination of applicability. So, we would do that.
And my understanding is the abutting property, the same owner, is operating the same use with the abutting property?
That's correct. Yes, they play parts for the aerospace industry, for Atheon, those types of people. It's pretty well laid out in her narrative.
I don't see it being that de minimis, that it doesn't need notice to the neighbors, in all honesty. I mean, we've had projects that, like even the town gym got notice to the neighbor, the town fire department. It just, it seems like notices to the neighbor have to go out. You know, we don't know what they're, you know, we know what you're saying. It seems like there's no impact on the neighborhood, but until we hear their point of view, we don't know.
And I'd like to see the full, you know, conservation consultant's review on this project. I mean, you're talking some pretty powerful assets in a plating operation, I think.
Air industry is highly regulated.
Yeah, and...
And I'm sure that they can explain it better than I, but...
In New Hampshire, the office manager, I think, or the plant manager, was sentenced to two years in jail for falsifying EPA reports.
Well, we got to separate what's our responsibility from other areas of responsibility. I mean, we have a, if it's an allowed use, which it is, we have jurisdiction over certain things, but other, the building inspector and other people have jurisdiction over other things. I don't want to step on other people's turf, you know, in terms of that. So, I mean, it's fair to raise the issue broadly, but we can't drill down into it in excruciating detail. I mean, it's just not our role to do that. So, if, if there's an element of Board of Health environment, or police, or fire, or the building inspector, fine, that needs to happen anyway. But it's, it's not, you know, our primary responsibility to make sure those things happen.
My feeling is that we need to look at it closer than just a little A and R review tonight. Site plan review.
Yeah, well, we have to, we can't look at it any more broadly in site plan review because we don't have the legal authority.
No, but a site plan review, we have to do.
Yeah, I think we, yeah.
I think it said, you know, that they were trying to not have a site plan review.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's it, I think, so far.
I beg to think that's not the case.
Oh, no?
It's on our agenda for waiver and site plan review.
Correct.
So, that's, yeah.
So...
But we've been working with staff for a year and a half on it. It's not like we're trying to pull something here, so.
I mean, we can go through this fairly, no, you're not. And I don't think that's the intent. We appreciate you coming in, and I think you've been very straight with us and, you know, fairly detailed with us. But I think, I think the consensus of the board is that we wouldn't waive site plan review for any number of reasons. And we'll get you one quickly and we'll get through it quickly. We don't want to hold you up. And, you know, if we had known about three months ago, we would have advertised it already and we would have had the hearing. But, you know, this is the first we've heard about it, so.
Is there any comment that you could give me or guidance here? You know, as we discussed it with staff, we talked about, you know, this replication of impervious area, pervious area, rather, at that end of the site. I mean, if you could give me any comments in the meantime, while I have it up here.
8x40 storage container. What's it made of? Why are you going to have it? I mean, is it big Conex box in the back of the property? And why would you do that?
What's going to be in it and so forth?
Well, why, why, if it's an 8x40 Conex box, I mean, those are hideous looking. Why not just build a small addition to the building if that's the case?
Okay.
I mean, are you talking one of those metal storage boxes?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
Where is it?
A shipping container.
Oh, it's a shipping container.
Those big 8x40 metal, you know, which end up with graffiti all over them when you see them around towns, you know. If you're going to do that, I'd say it should be screened and fenced in or something like that, screening or something. I don't know quite what views there are, but those are pretty hideous looking boxes. I don't know why.
That's right. There is, it's not shown on here, but there is an existing dumpster enclosure that needs repair. I did visit with Board of Health. There was a dumpster permit when TruGreen had it in place, and she said she could just transfer that once we got ready.
Will you be combining the manufacturing operations of the two buildings?
They will be, yes.
Will there be material being transferred back and forth?
Yes, there will.
Probably, you know, we might want to know what that is and what the condition is.
More of an explanation of how the two interact.
At least our consultant, the environmental people might want to know.
They have a hygienist that can explain those things.
Did you say there were changes to the ventilation as well?
Part of the operation, there's ventilation involved, yes. Air compressors and, you know, it's part of their, their operation.
I mean, the fact that you're, that's the use that you have next door and there haven't been complaints, that says something that, you know, I mean, initially, when I heard this use, I said, oh, my gosh, you know, we'll have to address that.
Sure.
But if, if, in fact, you've been doing exactly the same type of use next door, probably if you use the same type of ventilation, I would presume that it's quiet and muffled and doesn't create any noise.
There was a problem a couple of years ago. It turned out it was 70, it wasn't 80. So, and they, they ended up putting up some screens or some such thing. We're familiar with the neighborhood. We brought Watts to that neighborhood when, from Lawrence years ago. And the last work we did there, we had a parking lot, which they were concerned about headlights shining through the trees type thing.
So, if we could have you in, we would, we would much appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you.
Keep something coming. Okay, are we down to the downtown overlay district?
Okay, so, as discussed in the past, we've had some collaboration with Dave Steinberg and his team. Lynn and I have met. Mike also was included in that, Michael Coltoni. Lynn and I recently reviewed the most recent draft version. And what I forwarded to you was our pass, again, after a couple of deliberations up to now. So, what we'd like to do, I mean, we're getting somewhat close to, the warrant closes on March 9th. Having sent that draft, I guess we'd be interested if there's any high-level, broad comments that, of anything you saw that, you know, either you're really in favor of, you want more explanation for, or, you know, just see as a showstopper that just would, would not want to have that type of language. To be honest, I just got it to Dave and his team early this morning, so I'm not sure they've gone in tremendous detail through it. So, what I would ask is we'd be able to, again, revisit our latest pass with them, but take into consideration anything that may have jumped out at you at this point.
Do you want to add anything to?
I think the one thing, I think the applicant requested, and I didn't want, put it in our draft, was their, they wanted the waiver at a 70 feet. We didn't have that anywhere in town. So, I think maybe the applicant complete their case on why they think this site's appropriate and no other place in town is. And at the board... Yeah, the building height. I think that's probably the, a lot of, some, our formatting and our downtown overlay wasn't great. We tried to keep the formatting set. Actually fixed it and it looked better, but we went back to our formatting a little bit, so it coincides with it.
If you were trying to explain this to a town media audience, what would be your 30-second or one-minute explanation of how you would explain it?
First, I do, I want to show you the locus of, because I want to keep, everybody keep in mind that it not only creates a sub-district with different, you know, look and feel than our downtown, but it does incorporate two parcels that today are not within the downtown. And that transition piece from the residential to the mixed use and business use, I think we've been very sensitive to. So, if there's one thing I want to make sure that everybody's aware of at this point, is that it does incorporate two additional parcels. And the language that we included was really to try to facilitate that transition into this property. And as far as, to the public, I mean, it, this area just creates, it's a, it's a different look and a different configuration than downtown, and therefore, the zoning.
So, you're saying the size and the scale of the buildings in the property are different?
Size and scale, the property, the buildout within, the available space within the property still to be built out.
It's unique.
It's unique. It's unique, and the scale is just much different than the properties downtown.
Can you show us?
And the historic aspect of it and maintaining that look.
Can you show us what got added?
So, within, you see where, right, where it says downtown overlay district, and it has Z's through it. So, those two pieces, you see the pond to the...
What are those thingies?
Z's.
Z's.
The letter Z.
The letter Z, okay.
So, you can see the, the blue pond on one, and then it's yellowish on the other piece. So, that one is behind 4 High Street, or 21 High Street, I think we refer to it as now.
The baseball field and the garage.
Well, I'm talking the two that are within the downtown overlay now. And then, the old railroad right away is that gray line that separates two additional that are half gray and half yellow.
We probably need to get a tighter version of that for something because I'm messing it.
Here's the, so as Lynn spoke, now you can see that baseball field, and you can see the parking deck. So, the pre...
Those areas were not in the downtown.
In the previous version?
Which, okay, one second.
Up to the, right, up to the top.
Do you want to go back to the other one, John?
Okay.
So, the baseball field?
The baseball field.
And the parking deck?
And the parking deck.
Those two parcels today are not within the downtown overlay.
Oh, okay. So, oh, so the first one you showed us was the old and the other one is the new.
So, the first one is the downtown overlay is, includes the parcels where the Converse and Snyder properties were and across the street where Jamie's, Starchi's, that mill building.
All right, see, that makes sense to me. Yeah, I mean, if you were on the site, you would think that they were part of it anyway.
You would. But they were not including the downtown overlay. So, this sub-district would include those two parcels? And you can see, abutting them are some residential neighborhoods as well as Walker Road abuts where the parking garage is and Sutton Pond condominiums about where that ballpark is.
Yep, okay, got it.
So, as you read through this language, those are within the new sub-district, and some of the language and, and the transition is intended to do just that, transition from residential towards the mill buildings.
And again, for somebody who's uninitiated, how would you explain the transition? What would be a transitional use?
I'm sorry, what would be?
What would be like an example of a transitional use that's allowed to transition from?
Well, I guess, to Lynn's point, that's why we want to be very well aware of the building height within context of those properties and those parcels, so that as you transition, building height comes into play as well as the use. So, trying to get a sense as, can we have buildings that have residential use as well as commercial maybe lower? Do we want just residential? That type of transition.
But I guess a little bit the notion would be is that if you were doing a transition, you would step down what you would expect.
To protect that, so I'm coming from that direction, but, yes.
Right, yeah, okay.
But again, I just, I think, getting a sense of the master plan and allowing a master plan process so that we can see those faces and how that would look will be important, too.
I think the applicant put in a suggestion that it was based on, because that also, that zoning line, partial is IS and partially in residential, and that anything built in that area would probably go onto both sides, and saying, well, if it's fifty percent on the residential side, it'll be at least fifty percent residential, it's seventy percent, you know, something like that. They put in language on that, which...
The PDD, the PDD right now has language that if more than, I, don't quote me, but if more than twenty-five percent of the property is within the residential zone, then fifty-one percent of the building would be residential. So, we've incorporated language very similar to the PDD in that.
So, what do people think? Does everybody want a chance to read it again?
So, the ball field? This is probably an obvious question, but I just don't know the answer to it. This adds the ball field to the downtown area.
The downtown overlay within subdistrict A, we're calling it, yep.
So, what does that mean for the ball field?
I don't think anyone really uses it as a ball field, do they?
I mean, that's my question. I mean, is that, is that an issue? Is that ball field something that's valued by?
Dave can speak to that. I mean, it's...
What's that?
It's private property, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the ball fields, which, you know, have been there for a while, be used by the corporate users, have never really been used. They sort of sit out there, and I just want to make a couple...
So, it's not a neighborhood?
Not a neighborhood park.
It's not, it's private.
Just a couple of quick points, because it sort of stands out in the plans. One is that there's this sort of streak running through the property, which I think creates some of the distraction as you look at the downtown overlay, and maybe a false impression that you're really leaving it. But that parcel, for some reason, hasn't been carried by the assessor's office as part of the Davis and Ferber property, but is owned, fee simple, by the Davis and Ferber property, and was, actually, the railroad was granted an easement for a period of time over it, but obviously, the railroad is no longer there, and that's why it's part of the parking lots and development parcels that are here. So, it sort of has a funny appearance in the zoning map.
You talking about Craig Park?
Yeah, how there's sort of like a separation there between the yellow sections. Should really be included, it's not carried on the assessor's map, but it's sort of included in what the property is valued as, because it's...
Right, I mean, it seems to me that they clearly, you know, there may be some residual easement rates, but the property belongs to you, so.
Right, right. So, I was thinking in the map, you know, as much as possible, the map, I think that that, we should try to correct that streak, because it's not a separate ownership. Included, my understanding from the assessor's office, is actually included in the parcels as far as valuation and other things. It was just carved out from the historical use, if they thought it was a different thing. So, because we do want to emphasize that, right, it's, it's the property that's already there, and is, there is continuity with the downtown, if you look at it in the sort of big picture. And I think the other, to backtrack to sort of the big picture and why we're asking for this subdistrict, was really what we're trying to do is, is we're in a couple overlays now. We're in the downtown overlay, we have a PDD overlay here, and we're trying to sort of marry these things to one concept, to what people think is the right development plan. I don't think there's, even in the language here, and when we're talking about height, there's actually not much that's new. It's more, you know, taking from those two districts what makes sense for this parcel. So, I think, going back to the question of height, there are, the buildings on the site, are, there's a couple, in one case, if you count the tower on the other side, but the Converse building is about seventy feet tall. So, that's why, and when we came and did the waiver process last year for being on the downtown overlay, the historic parcels, I think we were on the same page that if we took down buildings and it was by the Converse building and it was in, you know, that area of the site, that type of waiver might make sense for the right type of building. And in this case, we're trying to get a consistent approach to the whole site, so as we plan out development, we could pick the spots on the site that made the most sense for the different types of uses. It's also hard to tell from the picture of the topography. Obviously, there's a valley in the middle of the site, and you go significantly uphill pretty fast on Prescott Streets, so there's things in play. And we really tried to lay out with setbacks what would be the appropriate areas to address height or to address commercial uses versus residential uses. By doing that, for instance, you know, there'd be a hundred-foot setback if we were talking about a taller building than what was allowable by right in the IS anyway, which I believe is fifty-five. So, I think those are the two main areas that popped up there.
So, you, you guys just got this, so you haven't had a chance to look at it and make recommendations? Because I think there's sort of two dimensions, as I say, that's happening. We may notice some things that we think could be crafted a little bit better just by iterations, but if there's any areas where we disagree, you know, and it's, I think it's very much a good face, so, but if we disagree, we disagree. We should put it on the table and work our way through it and resolve it, which I'm sure we will be able to, but if we're under the premise that you agree with everything and you're not, then we've got to get that on the table, so.
No, I think there are some key points. Height was addressed, and there are a couple other dimensional type questions. I think there's a couple other process questions and language that we want to make sure we've had a good chance to look at and figure out what the right resolution there would be. We don't want to again, end up in a circular trap.
Wordsmith issue. In eighteen point nine zero under purpose, does not detract from the livability and aesthetics of aesthetic qualities of the environment, livability.
I don't know who came up.
There has to be a better word. There has.
There's a lot, if you read, well, what I see is...
Lawyer away.
I just know, I said, there has to be a better, I came up with twenty, but you know, there's a better word.
Well, yeah, certainly, we encourage if there, and I think there's some things where we're trying to address, you know, there's a hundred sort of sentences here, plus sentences that might be able to be phrased a little bit better, so we're going to work on that as well.
I was just like, I was just like...
And both in a technical sense and, right, just for the concept of what explains what we're trying to get at better. We agree with that, and we'll spend time on that as well.
We had a conversation about this on definitions. We can't define or use or put a definition for like hotel, or what we think a hotel is, because a hotel is used anywhere else in the bylaw. It'd require an amendment, so it's, it's...
I know.
I know, I agree with you, but there's certainly, but there's a lot of problems with just making this overlay and stuff, because...
I know, and that's such a minor thing, just, that was it.
Yeah, because we're like, what's a hotel? Well, it has beds. Well, a doctor's office might have a bed, you know?
Right.
Or a, you know, different, uh...
I think it's good.
Well, you could do this. You know it when you see it.
Well, exactly, and that's sort of what we set it up at to some point, you know?
So, what, what's our time frame on this now?
The next meeting.
Yeah, we have to, we have to get everything done by the next meeting, so we can direct Jean to get it into the warrant. I mean, like it or not, even after that, there's a little bit of a push and pull, I mean, but one of the things that we, we had done in the past from some of these changes is literally to the day of town meeting, which is not what we want to do. I think we want to get this in as good shape as possible for the ninth, and certainly by the time the warrant is finalized. We at least, among ourselves ought all be in consensus on this, so, without any more changes, so.
Again, I was hoping at this point, and for those that have read it, if you see anything that you want to add, comment to, we will be happy to meet with the group.
In general, I thought you had covered the issues I could think of, but I'm trying to read that thing on a little laptop, and, you know, it's...
So, our homework is to go through it one more time and provide feedback, and you are asking the team here to do the same, and you'll get their feedback, right?
Right, hopefully, we can meet with your team sometime between now and then March third meeting, and then if we can go back one more time on March third.
And hopefully finalize that, yeah. So, feel free to let us all know, and you're going to, Lynn and Michael are going to participate in that process, so.
One question on your, the railroad easement roads section lot. How far does it go out, since it's not on the...
It's basically a straight line. It's, it's hard to describe, so if you drew the line straight on each side across the railroad parcel, so if you look on the east mill side of the garage, you see it running from the houses on Prescott.
Okay.
They basically go straight across it, but look like the natural lot line.
Okay.
And it's, right, that...
And then you must have crossed easements with the other properties, or are there, are they just...
Well, there are lots of other easements. I mean, there's a sewer easement, there's an electrical easement, there's all these things, but I think...
So, basically, you couldn't build on that little section, or at least on the...
Parts of it, parts of it we could. I mean, we, right, we own them, but there are areas that we have preserve access for the electric company, or, you know, make sure the sewer line can be accessed.
Yeah.
But it's actually, even though it looks very narrow on the site, it's a significant, you know, part of, part of the property, and establishes the continuity, so it's helpful. It's not, what happens beyond the Davis and Ferber lines of that property is actually a mystery that we were trying to unwind with Judy as well. It's apparently town land, but the town doesn't have it on their own record, so nobody's really sure. Sometimes those things disappear.
Yeah.
So, when you said, as far as ownership, Seth, I didn't see where you pointed, but does it go all the way down to where it says Walker Road on the screen?
Yeah, I'll provide you this, our survey. Yeah, so it's basically the line along the Walker Road condos, straight down to the parcel one of the east mill, which is the pond is.
It doesn't follow the river upstream. It comes straight across.
Okay.
Our understanding is that.
Okay.
Right, and then on the other side, you sort of...
This section right up there, that, that sort of subdivides the two yellow things?
Yeah, yeah, that's filled in, that's our land.
That's part, what, you guys own that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not like you've just got a little sliver of land there.
But you're connected to Walker Road with the formal land?
No.
So, you, so you, so that's a parcel the town owns, you think? Or someone, no man's land?
No, it's no man's land.
Okay.
I wouldn't suggest going back there. It's sort of like a dump, we've gone with our own people to clean it, but it's sort of a dumping ground. It's overgrown and...
Oh, the teenagers cut the...
Teenagers, you often find the back...
Now, Judy, back in your day, was that known to be a place?
I have a teenage son. We were down the other end. We were much, we were more downtown than that.
So, I think, just as far as the schedule, we're going to get comments back probably by the end of tomorrow, let's say, so you'll have comments by Thursday. If we, if the board can give us a little time, like a week before the next hearing on that.
I mean, I feel like we want to get this right, so, you know, take as much or little time as you need, so.
But I was saying, if we can get, if the board can do whatever their feedback is, we can try to incorporate it all before the next meeting and see if there's any question back there.
We have a smaller group meeting next week.
Yeah.
A smaller group meeting next week with the sub, sub meeting would be ideal.
Yeah, if we can use the working group again, but if anybody can provide feedback by the end of this week, so that we have everything, and then hopefully on the third, we've got a pretty good pass at this.
Sure.
So, we can get it on the warrant, on the, of course, in addition to this, we need a map warrant article as well.
That's right.
To differentiate the two.
And that's, we also talked about, we have, we want to rescind the two-year one if this passes.
Right.
So, we want to have that...
Yep, that's good.
So, part of this draft is removing the waiver provisions that were put in last time?
Yeah.
So, they were put in, I think, in an attempt to provide some flexibility over this two-year period, but they'd be removed going forward, and that's why I commented on the numbering.